So good evening, everybody. Welcome to the public board meeting for 2024 for the AHTS governing board. Policy meeting officially go order. And we'll start first with opening prayer and then we'll go on with introductions in the flow of the meeting. So Father Matt.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
O gracious and holy Father, give us wisdom to perceive you, diligence to see you, patience to wait for you, eyes to behold you, a heart to meditate on you, a life to proclaim you through the powerful Spirit of Jesus Christ our Lord.
Amen.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Thank you, Father. First thing I'd like to go versus for flow of the meeting, Stephen. We are looking at, first with introductions, all the overall board members first. And then we'll, per, person that's going to speak about five to 10 minutes each, so we have the flow that doesn't take up all your time. And first, we'll have, first of all, Harley, our principal, and Loretta, who could join us tonight. She will be here with a recorded remark. We'll have Jenny, our development director, our booster club president, Chris Kerr is also here. And then our representative from each committee will be speaking and going over the 2023-24 school year. I would first like to start with the introduction of the board members that are sitting in front of me, just so you guys are aware of who's who. From the Sacred Heart Parish, we have Sean Truman, Bill Shell, actually, who wasn't able to join us tonight, myself, Suzie Jenkins, and of course, Father Chris from Sacred Heart. Then from St. John Parish, we have Danny Rectormold, who got called away by an emergency, a family emergency, so is also not able to join us. Anne Wright, and Jacob Tinn. And then from the St. Anne's Parish, we have St. Eko. We have Vince Melatella, and Danielle. I'm gonna mess it up. Every time. Michael Le... Michael Le... Yay!
It's so easy, but so little.
I know, it's so easy for my... And then, of course, we have Father Matt, the representative of St. John, the St. Anne's. So we'll begin today with, first, we'll start with Harley, if she's ready, and go over her first speech or something.
Hi, well, I'm Harley, the principal of St. Hart. I'm gonna just go through some different things about the school, changes that have happened. We do have three staff members that are retiring this year. We have one current opening for next school year. And our K-3, V staff have completed their dyslexia training, which is required by the state. And this coming school year, they will work on the science of reading. Science of reading is, the state's kind of come out with the importance of it, so we're gonna get trained in that. And our degree curriculum aligns with the science of reading. And that has been implemented in grades K-2, and third grade will be added for the coming school year. We currently have 239 students enrolled in K-3, V. This is up from last year by seven students. Our preschool has 75 students, which is our cap, and that's up from last year as well. Our enrollment for next year is currently at 226, which is a little higher than where we were at at this high watch year, so that's positive. Some updates that have been done to the grade school building is we've had additional cameras were added within the building. And then we put video monitoring at our two main entrances. A new slide we installed this summer, because one of them is kind of getting old and warped, so we'll have a new one of those installed. The upstairs hallway will be canteen as well as stairwells. And then during the school year, the gym will be canteen. We're gonna be getting 30 new student desks and chairs. And also three new smart boards, smart boards installed. We have three installed this current school year, so we're slowly getting new ones installed in all of our classrooms. We're also going to be installing carpet on our first floor and a dining room. And it'll match the upstairs carpet as in this summer. Two of the classrooms in the hallway will be done, and then next summer, the final two classrooms will be done. And during that time, we're also definitely updating the base floor and room of the school, just getting that updated. There's a lot of missing pieces there. In the preschool building, we moved, we removed a wall that was kind of blocking a lot of natural light in the classroom. So that was removed to allow that. As far as our Catholic faith in our schools, our students continue to participate in adoration, stationing across, weekly mass, penance service, made crowning, and daily classroom prayers. Each month, a student is chosen from each classroom to receive a Christian Living Award, which is based on the virtue of the month. Our second graders continue to make their sacraments of first reconciliation and first holy communion. They also, all students participate in Advent and Lententum retreat. And our staff and students in grades 2 through 5 take a part religious assessment, which is through the Diocese of Toledo. And next year, we are hoping with, to start with our 4th and 5th graders, to have some on-site retreats for them. We want to start letting these students, getting them involved more in their faith that way. They don't get to start those experiences until 6th grade. So we want to have something that they can do at school to increase their faith. This year, some service projects for Advent, we collected items for the Liberty Center. For Catholic Schools Week, we collected items for survival baskets, and we were giving to community workers around the frame room. We did pennies by the pound challenge for United Way. We did a Thanksgiving food drive for Sylvester's root pantry. The preschool did a bike-a-thon, which they just wrapped up with this week, and that supports the Liberty Center. And then we also did a collection of a whole different one. We continue to partner with Catholic Counseling, which is a counseling service that's needs-based on referral. And they also went holding their groups for our 4th and 5th graders. So they've been coming in, there's several counselors that come in, and the students are placed in groups, and they just work on that social-emotional aspect of their program. And then we also partnered with Metamucil Recovery Services Board, where we have received a $10,000 grant, this will be our third year receiving it. And we use it for social-emotional opportunities, assemblies, therapy groups, just different things like that. Grade kits that we have on campus for our students. I mentioned that our new curriculum has been updated, and we're slowly gonna add each grade. We continue to use math testing for our students. We are looking at exploring special studies and health curriculums to bring them on to date. And also applying some systemic awareness program. And our 4th and 5th graders received first and second honors. And we're looking to add 3rd grade to those awards for next year, kind of just bringing to recognize students and their efforts. We offer a lot of student activities throughout the year. It's about 18 in all, meaning I mean, they run from choir prevention week to that ribbon week. All kinds of things, they get to be in student council, choir, a camp, there are servers, we have book fairs, Christmas and spring programs. This year, we held a dance for our students. It went really well, because really liked that, so we're hoping to continue that. For our family involvement, we continue to have grandparents' day, our Title One night, family letters tonight, veterans' day, walkings with mom, walkings with dad. There's PTO opportunity for our parents to be involved. Weekly mass, invite our parents and grandparents to come to mass. Classroom and field trip volunteers, field day, and also our book fair. And this year, our fundraisers were the croquito, value cards at our flower sale. And for the next school year, I think, you know, one of the big things that myself and the guidance counselor are working on is really honing in on social-emotional development for our students and creating those opportunities to grow in that area. So I want to thank you for your continued support and partnership, and I am blessed to be part of this big school year.
Thank you, Carly, so much, appreciate it. Next, we'll hear from Loretta Foyle, who is our principal at the SJCC campus. She is actually out of state for Vandermaner, so she recorded what she would like to say right here.
Hello, I'm Loretta Foyle, the principal at SJCC. Thank you for coming and listening to all of the athletes I had to share for SJCC this year. We're gonna start with Catholic identity. So our Religious Education Department is working very hard to build a way for our faith and formation director. We have Evelyn Clark coming to serve in this school, and she will be starting June 3rd, and we're super excited to have her on the staff. Religious Department overall has continued organizing, facilitating on the virtual boards, adoration, sacrament preparation, and partnership with the parishes, made crowning prayers to start the school day, and to start the classes, for lunch, and at the end of the school day. We have added service hours for our junior high students this year, always be a requirement for our high school students. And the hours may determine this year that they need to be done prior rather than waiting until they're receiving. So well, junior high and high school students now are probably serving service hours yearly. We continue with our Advent and Luncheon Ray projects. Our classrooms include virtual posters, which are hanging in all the classrooms. And teachers use that as a guide when they are teaching content in the classrooms. And as students move through classrooms, the classroom that are always reminded of this virtue, which will be handed in with our mission. We also added a comethisvideo to our Thinking Thursdays as just another reminder of our virtues. All of our classes do a yearly retreat for our 6th, 11th, and 12th pre-graduates. They attend the masses for three days and two nights. And the 8th pre-graduates do the same thing, but they do that in collaboration with the parishes in preparation for the sacraments. All the other pre-graduates do a one-day retreat during the school day. We developed Catholic rams for our students, which are set by the staff anytime of the school year, home to the child. And we also developed Catholic rams for our staff to do one-on-one. Our involvement chapters, success, we've had one of our families. We have also been concentrating on increasing participation in mass through our choir, servers, the choralistic ministers, and general listening and response. Our concentration has worked, and we have noticed an increase in all of these areas. Moving on to academic life, we continue to expand our programs and our challenging content for our students. We conducted several juniors into the National Honors Committee this year, which was the most we've had in the last few years. We had a wonderful partnership with Calvert. We met with Calvert at the end of last school year, just to share any areas where we may need an instructor or maybe some common regards to maybe handle or something of that nature. Calvert was very willing to share any information or teachings that they had, we did the same for them. In the end, Calvert was willing to share her AP calculus teacher. We had several AP calculus students who virtually attended a Calvert AP calculus class. It went very well this year, and we will be returning the favor to Calvert next year, while there are students who will be virtually attending our AP calculus class. We provided the same opportunity to one same amount of students who attended our algebra class virtually this year. We also have partnership broken to teach students about trading on the stock market using an interactive program to simulate trading and monitoring progress, kids love it. Our CDP projects, we received way of reviews this year. Every year, we increase the expectations, and this year, the students included how their faith has impacted their overall growth and their career choice. We offer three AP classes, in US history, calculus, and biology. We have two CDP classes that are taught on campus, one being by our very own teachers. And all of our classes can be advanced, or we offer advanced classes in all of our separate areas. We do offer professional development opportunities for our staff. Last two years, we've been working on differentiation and understanding different strategies, ways we need students into our curriculum. The math department has been receiving coaching this year, who will on-site entertain to work on creating whole thinking classrooms and set up a typical process as students taking notes, making sure how to get the answer. The coaching is helping our teachers how to, the students how to evolve the solution in a process on their own or with their peers first, before they even get an answer with the process. Right, it was also a focus this year for all subject areas, and positive improvements received. And lastly, we had a digital empowerment speaker who came twice to talk to her parents about the risks of internet choices, cellphone trends, to better protect their children. In our art, music, and drama department, we continue to have a positive partnership with Fremont Cities and Falls for the user that are working our center. And work to collaboratively on the production of the musical High School Musical, which included both Fremont and SJCC students, was a large turnoff for the Fremont community, and the first time we have our career with Fremont in Indiana. We held a high school only production, that would be in the Beast. We're holding our first ever junior high production, we'll monitor for you next week. At SJCC, hope to see you all there, it's next Tuesday and Wednesday evening. The Best Fans Society has been working very hard for the junior high production to get them ready for next week. Our Christmas card and music program included the drama department for the first time, featuring the band as the music for the client. We have received several grants this past year to help facilitate our mission. Two of those grants were funded by the same women and the same cashier, and they both given to us to dedicate our classrooms with funding from retreats. Theology and Divine Regular, Smart Forest, and Religious Pictures in Earth. We also received a safety grant through the state of Ohio, split between both buildings, Sacred Heart and SJCC. We received additional cameras inside and outside of the school, classroom head box, the classroom doors. Lastly, we received a grant from the National Health and Cultural Services Board. We received this grant over the last few years, and this year decided to use it to provide an additional guidance council or few hours for me, to provide further support to our students. And lastly, in sports, many athletes with sports, including several junior high students who entered the state tournament in wrestling and pool ball, pool ball team this year. And we have one high school student attended the state tournament for golf. We've had several teams and individual players who are honored, the first and second team for the SBC. We've had two world qualifiers to accomplish in this sport. We had a student break the school record in bowl ball. We had a student receive $1,000 in volleyball. And we also have the volleyball team honored for their academic honors by the OHHSBA Coaches Association with an average GPA of 4.12. Thank you so much for listening to all of the wonderful things going on at SJCC. We hope to see you soon, thanks so much.
I love to hear a lot about one guest who is pretty impressive at both campuses. Very proud of everybody. Next is our development, Jenny Green.
Thank you, Suzie, and thank you all for being here tonight. First off, I just wanted to say I am so excited to welcome the class of 2024 to our prestigious alumni community. We at the HTS continue to produce results. We have a student that is going to Ivy League, a student that has a full ride academic scholarship to Tiananmen, three students that are going on to play sports in a collegiate level. We have a student that is already has a wealthy job making more than many people. So I just want to say we have such a diverse, diverse group of kids, and I'm just so proud of her. But to move on to development. So last year, the annual fund, which is our biggest fundraiser for the year, raised about $148,000. This year, we are over $150,000. We had a very successful auction. We brought in just under $112,000 that night. And that includes $11,000 that from regular cattle, which goes towards tuition assistance. Our annual calendar drive brought in approximately $16,000. We also have many individuals take advantage of the Ohio tax credit for donating to a scholarship granting organization. So for those of you who don't know, in Ohio, they are giving a dollar-for-dollar tax credit, up to $750 for an individual, or 1,500 for a couple under Ohio taxes if you donate to a certified scholarship granting organization. So we worked with two directly, with two scholarship granting organizations, one being the Ohio Scholarship Fund, which is called Every Child, Every Family, and then also the Diocese of Toledo. So through Every Child, Every Family, we received a gross amount of $19,000. And then the Diocese of Toledo, they received about $6,800 that directs the benefit to students of the HTS. So applications to receive those funds were sent to our families. And we will, we will soon be awarding the Every Child, Every Family scholarships, whereas the Diocese of Toledo, they will award theirs, they have their own scholarship application. So it's a really exciting opportunity for our families. We recently, last weekend, held the Nader Rivers Raffle in person after being virtual since 2019. We thought it was very important to let our families know what it takes to run the Nader Sports Complex. The budget for that is outside of the HTS budget. It is financed independently from the school, all through donors. So that's why the Rivers Raffle is important. We raised about $13,000, which is the high end of what has been raised at the raffle throughout the years. We partnered with Sunduski County Health Department with their Creating Healthy Communities grants. So we'll be receiving bike racks through both campuses, which is exciting, because as you can see, there's bikes every day out on them. And so I'm sure Father Matt is happy to be able to resolve this. We celebrated our rich history of our alumni. In August, we did a IK in honor of 50 years of cross-country. And we will be holding it again this year in memory of Paige Russell, and that's on August 17. And it's a fun event, it's gonna be a little kid run as well, so it's great to see all of the HTS families there. We celebrated 50 years of women's basketball, after, got a basketball game, girls' basketball game this year. And then we brought back the beloved alumni basketball game. We celebrated our Hall of Fame and our Heritage Award inductees earlier this month. They were the Hall of Fame, Jack Olmeyer, Corey Durbin, and Devin Podlock. And then our Alumni Association inducted, who's their heritage, Mike Gago, Bob and Shelley Foster, Monica Ramirez. We received $61,000 from the Catholic Education Development Fund. We received generous bequest this year from Mary Ellen Peckner's, the state, and also the state of Harold Fox. We received a generous donation of a bus that is lovingly called Annie, and has a beautiful angel of Annie in the bus. We continuously receive support from our alumni association. They hosted their popular Booster Egg Hunt here. They sponsored our Pride Day at SJCC. And they continue to donate to the development department for the production of The Voice. Speaking of The Voice, we are doing two issues a year. The last issue was focused on alumni that excelled in the STEM fields. And then the next issue is art-focused, and it's gonna be really fun and exciting for everyone to read it. I email out monthly updates to alumni and parents of alumni about things going on at specifically SJCC. So if you are one of those and don't receive my emails, please let me know, and I'll make sure you're added to that list. We are currently in the works of raising money for projects at Nader, which include a building, which we have received $25,000 from the Fremont Area Foundation and another $25,000 from a private donor. So we're hoping to finish raising the money for that, so we can break ground. We are also raising money for the chemistry lab, some necessary updates to that. I am currently partnering with some nonprofit leaders from the Hate Center and the Sunduski County Communities Foundation. We are putting out a plan to giving seminar for other nonprofits. And then in the late summer, early fall, we're going to be doing a night for our donors about legacy giving. So that, so keep your eyes out for that, it'll be great. And then finally, my door is always open, I'm always learning. And so if you have advice, ideas, please reach out to me. You're greatly appreciated, thank you.
Thank you, Jenny, just, we're so glad we got you, so glad. Next, a new addition. We want to acknowledge our boosters a little bit more, considering what they do for our athletic programs. So in our regular board meetings, we're including our booster meeting, or booster meeting minutes as well, just to acknowledge all the stuff that they do for us, which is a significant amount. So I asked the president of boosters, Chris Kerr, just to give us an update from the booster perspective for this school year. Chris?
Hi, good evening. My name is Chris Kerr, and I'm the current president of the SJCC Bush Club. Thank you, HTS Board, for allowing me to say a few words. Bush Club works out for production of curricular activities for students at Central Special Catholic High School. Bush Club elects officers and members and board members, and is a 501(c)(2) organization. Just for passengers, though, the boosters are funded to follow. Baseball and softball field surface upgrades, in addition to additional stone and dirt needs for maintenance and upkeep. Boys varsity basketball uniforms, new lights on the gym, funded by generous donation by the Doyle musical family. Letters on the side of SJCC outside of the gymnasium. Boys and girls versed in golf bags, football equipment, including portable sidelines for upcoming eight-man football season. GNI tracking forms, and two brand-new wrestling pads from the previous past season. These are still funding some ideas we had, or projects we had in the past year or so. In addition, we are working with the SJCC administration to bring about a new building at the Nader Sports Complex. And we are in early stages of funding a new scoreboard for both softball and baseball fields. These prizes pass on to current fundraising events in the cabin code, transportation route, Super Bowl brackets, and football and basketball quarter booths. Many, many corporations are involved and volunteer, making these happen. Bush Club also receives donations made in memory of what ones have passed. Finally, active membership drives success. We currently have about 450 members, and there are two types of membership. Basic membership is $20 for a year, and the 200-plus club membership is only $60 a year. The 200-plus club membership includes having your names in two drawings per contributing for a chance of winning cash, and attending the annual Rivers Raffle in dinner for a chance of more cash. More help is always available. Your time, talent, and organization are vital for the success of the organization and ultimately the HTS. Please consider becoming a member, invite friends and family to the match. Volunteer in one of the events and greatly interact with others to help support the students here at Central Special Catholic. Meetings are held on the first and third Mondays of the month, 8:00 p.m., on the second floor of Shays and Fly Building, 408 Jax Street. Meetings are open to all members of Bush Club, and are normally rushed for 45 minutes, and it's a solid rate, so you can't wait. And popcorn is free. Meetings are very good to get updates from coaches about the respective seasons, and find out what's happening to support our students. Oftentimes, same show, so the administration knows also, so it's where we interact very socially and beneficial. So very quick and not time-intensive. If you have your time and have any questions, please reach out.
Great, thanks, Chris. Again, so grateful for the boosters and all they do, and I think it's great for everybody to know. Next, we'll start with our committees, and we'll have a representative from three of our main committees come up and speak. So we'll start with finance, Anne Wright.
Hello, everyone, thank you guys for coming. I'm going to update on the financial committee. So I don't know if everyone's aware, this school year 2021 stopped a period of time where the HTS had six net operating losses out of seven years. Since then, we have been positive, which is very exciting. Our current business managers continue to work on sound financial practices that have led to cost savings on things like utilities, service contracts, late fees, penalties. That doesn't sound like a lot, but if you add it up over the years and with all the people involved, it does add up. Since 2021 fiscal year, there have been three straight fiscal years that produced a positive net operating income. And we're currently on case 2324 to be another positive operating income. and we're currently on case twenty-three, twenty-four, to be another positive net operating income. We completed the twenty-four, twenty-five school year budget. It was approved during our April school ordinance. It's been submitted to the Diocese for approval. The budget submitted will also prove to be positive. We have roughly a hundred and eleven thousand dollars in trajectory for a positive net income for next year, if we continue to stay properly budgeted, which we anticipate. This would be the fifth straight year for a positive net operating income, which is very exciting. We have not seen that in years, probably a very long time. I don't have the stats, but it's something to be proud of. I want to speak to Ed Choice. Pam and I, too, here this evening are helping coordinators, so I only read some things she prepared about it. Obviously, I think many or everyone has heard last July, 2023, that the Department of Education and workforce introduced the significant provisions to the traditional Ed Choice to include the expansion of the scholarship. These established initiatives empowered families to act out of their public spending, acted to private schooling without bearing the burden of the expensive tuition fees. The changes made to these programs, widening eligibility criteria, making scholarships available to all K through twelve families, consequently, every student in our bishop-friendly Catholic school system, as well as those looking to come to our school system, now qualified for a scholarship at some level. This marks the departure from previous years, where only a limited number of current families qualified and met the requirements to have eligibility to gain that scholarship. It's a true blessing for all of our families and those looking to come and join to be a part of our HTS family. For our family to scholarship for our families, and these scholarships translating into reducing our out-of-pocket costs. It doesn't increase the amount of dollars available to the school. It decreases the amount coming out of our families' pockets. It lessens their financial burden. The benefit serves our families rather than our school system, and it lessens the financial strain for our families. During the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, four hundred and eight students took advantage of the scholarship opportunity, representing approximately ninety percent of our current families. Families this year received an annual for nine hundred and fifty dollars per student to the full eighty-four oh eight per student, which was applied towards their tuition fees to decrease the total amount that had come out of families' pockets. As Pam and all of us strongly urge all families to seize this opportunity and apply. It alleviates the financial burden of our families and the parents. Ms. Jenny, we talked about our auction and the success of it, so I don't want to talk here. The finance committee has had more meetings with our investment partners, Proton Romeo Bank, KeyBank, for example. This is done so our committee members can review the accounts on a quarterly basis and make changes to the strategy so that the best possible return can be achieved. Like all investments, they're not a sure thing, which is why the committee works with our investment partners on a risk-centered analysis of potential strategy decisions. In the fall of last year, 2023, the board approved a finance committee investment and spending policy. Previously, there were several documents regarding investments that caught with policies that they were not consistent with one another, and were not consistent with current board members. So we knew that we had to instill some sort of policy. Now there is one policy moving forward that details the rules and regulations, the gains and losses, responsibilities of the finance committee and the school board members. The policy lays the tracks and compares to what other institutions have in place for their investment and spending policies, so it puts us more inside of expectations and how we can be public and let you guys know what's going on. The HTS relies on the investment funds to offer scholarships, which is why most tensions is paid to the investment funds, and why that is so crucial, so that the HTS is able to provide scholarship dollars on a quarterly basis. The strategic planning within the board has recently implemented this committee, and of course, there are some financial subcommittees. The finance committee, along with the board, is working towards a more sustainable future. Being able to provide Catholic education to our community in Fremont is very important, and with the support of our local parishes, and we want to continue to practice more prudent financial principles. Thanks, everybody. Welcome to the finance committee.
Thank you, Ann. Next, we'll have Catholic identity, Cindy.
Good evening. The CIC, the Catholic identity committee, meets monthly, usually on the second Tuesday. They have taken our campus, and we're responsible for reporting back to the board while we give them due discuss. Our committee consists of our priests, principals, a teacher representative from grade school, from Junior High Academy, from SJCC. We have parents who have students, and we also have portioners who would wish to be involved. CIC assists the priests in guiding schools in matters of religious education, sacramental preparation, and liturgical preparation. We plan a yearly faculty retreat that usually takes place before the school year begins. We provide inspirational prayers and ideas for the teachers and the classrooms to be used during each quarter according to the theme of the year. Our theme this year is witness. We are in the beginning stages of brainstorming opportunities and resources to expand the student retreat experience, not only for the students in grades six through twelve, who are already involved with us, but also for the students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade. We are planning a heart-to-heart event, hopefully in the fall. That always brings in speakers who can inform and support our parents in the role that they have as the first educators of our children. A word of thanks goes out to our parish priests, who have been very generous with the time they share. They may boom in their already busy schedules for classroom visits on both campuses. We are blessed to have you here with us. Also, we got the opportunity to recently meet our new director of faith formation, Mrs. Emma McFar. Evelyn, Evelyn's using so much, at our last CIC meeting. She officially started her duties at the beginning of June, but she came to our meeting just to observe. She has some good ideas, too. We welcomed her to our school system, and we look forward to working with her in the future. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you, Cindy. And last, about these facilities grounds, Sean, Jim?
How's everybody doing today? Sure, you're walking, and you hear about building grounds, so. Be patient, I'll make it all the way through the list here. I was making a list, and I thank Jenny, Aunt Harley, and Loretta for getting me about ninety-five percent of the things off my list. So that's very much appreciative. Just a couple of things here at the high school. Obviously, it's not our project, but Proton Street's under construction, and it seems like it's going to be that way for a lot longer. So just continue to be patient with that. Couple of other things we've got going on over here. There's a need for new walking cooler down in the kitchen. The old walking cooler was flagged by a safety violation when we had an inspection about a year and a half ago, and we've got a donation for that, and that is going to get put in this summer. So that's coming. We're looking forward to that. Also, we are, as Jenny mentioned, I think it's going to reiterate it, we're getting some new bike racks put in at both schools. The one over here is going to, the one over high school is going to be right over here by the main entrance. Also, we're getting one of the things Jenny mentioned, is we're fortunate to get a donation for a new bus this year. So that's a big plus that helps for us. With that, we upgraded the extension cords. We had rented the corner of the building out to the lock heaters for buses, and we're able to get those stuck in permanently and have a couple electric stands out there so that there's no longer the need for people to trip over the extension cords when those are plugged in. So that's a great thing to have happen. Talking about moving on to the Nader facility, Jenny mentioned that we're going to start a fundraiser out there to improve the facilities out there, we need a storage building. We're renting a portion of the existing building out there, and we made the decision, through some private donations, to go ahead and build a building out there. So check your mailbox every night for those others to come out soon, looking for donations on that. Also, out at Nader, we are in the partnership phase, or we're hopefully going to be in a new partnership with Tara to allow them to play soccer out at our facility. And we are also looking at starting a new subcommittee for the Nader facility. There's just so many different things out at Nader that need to be talked about, and we want to keep the maintenance up. And there's just nobody in the school that has the capacity to do all that. So we're going to start a subcommittee. I don't know if it'll be off the, an offshoot loading grounds committee, or if it'll be a committee on its own. But we're going to start a committee that deals with the happening out of the Nader facility. So who's got the grass, who's running the field, who's doing what, who's making the order? Hopefully, that'll happen this, in the next couple of months, so we can get that moving forward. Over at the elementary school, we probably will be practicing about hitting all the highlights over there. But I'd like to thank Deacon Tim, because his tool got on this winter and got the community who's working for us properly, who has upwards of, I don't know, I think, we're there on twenty thousand dollars to make the year's done. We were able to get Deacon Tim to put his tool on and work with some of the repairmen from some local contractors, and we got those operating properly again. Also, I don't know if this was last year or if this was this year, but we got new tables over there, they look great. And then lastly, we got some old glass installed at the office, and some other security upgrades through a grant. So those are all possible things. Anybody have any questions about the loading grounds committee?
Sound system.
Oh, sound system. Yeah, I think we didn't, nobody mentioned the sound system. The sound system's installed, and that's great. If you went to the auction, it was fantastic. Another quarter here in the, here in the place, the music goes in here, too, so. We did. We also created, we can thank you very much, Abby. One of the units, one of the HAC units in the Savior cafeteria went out, and one of our partner, Church, was able to help us, and we were able to help them by financing that together, and get those replaced. So that is, that is up to us. And this is in the house, Abby. But if you have any questions about the loading grounds, I can answer after leaving. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Sean. So last, I'd like to go for a little bit more about what Ann mentioned is our strategic plan. We came together at the beginning of the year, decided one thing that is missing in our current operation this year at the HTS was how we were going to not just survive, but thrive as a school system going forward. So we were lucky enough with the new addition of Danny Rektewald to start a strategic planning process. It has been enlightening, and it's been a big undertaking, but it has been a super positive endeavor that we've started on. The leaders that we have are Danny Rektewald, Carol Oxlade-Sym, Marty Willis, and Chuck Irish. They have an unbelievable amount of experience in both the public school and the Catholic school systems, and have been guiding us along the way. We actually started it back in April, well, I'll be back up, actually. Our leader started months ago. But the community got involved at the public meeting with focus groups that met on April fifteenth. There was many people involved in those. It started in the school itself, that involved all the students, and then we got the faculty and staff involved. And in the evening, we ended up on a public meeting that got a lot of members from the community involved. Basically, that process looked like an interview process, where people already were to give their input and their insight in both written form and verbal form. We got a lot of feedback on all three levels, and took that moving forward to the planning team that met on April twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, that involved maybe thirty, thirty-some people, which is nice, that graciously volunteered their time. And the planning team then came together, taking all that information, and using that to focus on where our needs are at school system, and kind of set the parameters on what we need to focus on. Again, not to just survive, but to thrive in the school system going forward. And the next step was the action teams that met today. And speaking with Danny, he said they were awesome. They went really well, a lot of good feedback, a lot of go-getters, a lot of people taking the information from the planning team and moving forward. The biggest thing with the strategic plan is not just developing it, it's implementing it. And we're super positive about the action teams that were set today, and all of the people that are willing to volunteer their time very generously. I think that's about it for now. I will open it up to questions. If, again, we can't answer the questions for you specifically, if it's somebody from the committee or somebody from the school system, then we can direct you, hopefully, to where we need to go. But does anybody have any general questions? Evelyn, it's nice to meet you. Welcome. And we will be available here for the next ten minutes, if anybody would like to ask any questions on a number-one basis versus anybody asking in this little setting. I would just like to thank everybody up here that's sitting here that graciously volunteers for their time. It's a lot of work, but we all believe in one thing, and that's providing Catholic education to our students, which will bring our community. You guys are the great work. Very proud to stand up here with you, and hopefully, we can continue to service our students, because they are the most important part of the HTS community. And I would like to thank you all for coming this evening. And again, we'll sit around for about ten minutes or so, and answer any questions if we have them. Great. Thank you.